Good evening and welcome. I call the January 21 city council meeting to order. I'd like to ask those who'd like to join the council, myself, and the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
(Inaudible)
So we have a big crowd tonight, and we do have an overflow room at the Eagle Room across the street as well. Next item on the agenda is audience comments, and I wanted to put a few things out there before we start this evening. So this is the time for folks to talk to their council. The guidelines for public participation are displayed on the screen behind us. Due to the number of those in attendance this evening, and in accordance with Section 4.08(c) of the Council Rules of Procedure, I will be limiting audience comments to two minutes each, in an overall duration of approximately one hour this evening. Our regular business item tonight is the redesignation and rezone of Issaquah School District property at Providence Heights. I believe most of you may be here tonight to make comments or to observe the council decision on this rezone proposal. Due to the distinct positions on this issue, and to be fair to those on the many sides, we will be splitting the comment time between those wishing to speak in support of the rezone and those wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed rezone, or to make other recommendations to council. I will ask our clerk to alternate between those in support of and opposed to the proposed resignation and rezone, as she reads the list of speakers. Since audience comments is a regular item at our bimonthly council meetings, I first want to take 10 minutes to allow for those who may be attending this evening wanting to speak on other matters than the rezoning question, this first opportunity to address their council now. If your comments are not related to the Issaquah School District rezone, we will begin with you this evening. And due to the large number of additional folks in attendance, please limit your time to up to two minutes as well. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening on other items?
Yes, Linda Springman.
Good evening. That's okay. Thanks for giving me two minutes. You can start the clock. Hopefully, this will start you on a very positive note. I am not here for the other topic. My name is Linda Springman. I live at 1015 First Place Southeast in Issaquah, up in the Foothills Development, right above the Salmon Hatchery, and I'm a property owner. I just am really here to model good behavior. My niece was visiting me last week before she went to back to school for her last semester of college. And something happened last week, and we were talking about it, and I said, "Oh, I should go to the city council and tell them." She's like, "That's a good idea." And I know she'll ask me about it, so here I am. So last week, it snowed, and she was here during all of that. And I am in a neighborhood that's a very low priority. We usually don't get plowed, or if we do, it's kind of after, it's kind of too late. I woke up the morning after the snow, and my street, which never gets plowed, is completely plowed. It snowed that day, everything got covered up. The next morning, it was completely plowed again. So I'm here to tell you to please commend your transportation people and those people who worked really hard on the snow plowing. That's it. Thank you.
You can also show her you on YouTube, since we tape all these YouTube shows like that. Anyone else signed up, Tisha?
No.
And while I think it's really nice that you applauded this evening, typically, what we would like you to do, so that council can hear and you can hear, is raise your hand if you're in support of speaker's comments. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address the council on an issue other than the Issaquah School District rezone? Okay, second call. Anyone wishing to address council? And last call for anything other than the rezone. Okay, we'll move on. To start this portion of audience comments, I would like to provide a brief summary of what council has previously heard. I asked our city clerk to compile some information for me, and here is what we have heard. Over the past three months, council has heard from many individuals on the proposed rezone in person and in writing. On September 26, on October 24, the Planning Policy Commission meeting, 29 individuals spoke during the public hearing. An additional 47 comments were provided in writing. At the November 12 council study session, 29 individuals spoke over a two-hour public comment period. And at the December 16 council meeting, 23 individuals spoke over a one-hour and 15-minute public comment period. Since mid-November, over 350 emails have been received by the mayor and the city council on the rezone, and 150 of those since the December 16 city council meeting. That's a lot more than we normally get on any issue. So we have heard a lot of information from those on many sides of this issue. Speaking in favor of the rezone, we have heard that we need additional classroom capacity. Our classrooms are overcrowded, and this has had negative consequences on student development. That due to unprecedented residential growth in our town, now we need to keep up with community services. And we are the only high school district this size without a fourth comprehensive high school. Speaking in opposition of the rezone or asking for conditions of approval, we've heard concerns regarding impacts to a senior living community associated with a stadium, such as noise, lights, and traffic, the sufficiency of a buffer to screen between the senior community and school uses, traffic and transportation management issues, density of use of site, and other environmental concerns. Also, that there are unique characteristics of senior living that should be taken into account, such as sensitivity to noise and security concerns. That's not meant to be a comprehensive list, just a brief summary of what the council has been hearing. If you have additional perspectives to share tonight, adding to the list that I just read, you're welcome to speak under audience comments. If your concerns have been listed, but you wish to show support to information from any of our speakers tonight, please raise your hand so council is aware of your support. In order to be fair and respectful to all speakers, please do not shout out or clap. This makes it difficult for council and the audience to hear what is being said. As I said, please show your support for comments by raising your hand as folks are speaking. Those who have signed up will be called forward first. If you did not sign up, and there is time remaining, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. And if you're here speaking on behalf of a group, please identify that in your comments. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak on the proposed Issaquah School District rezone this evening?
Yes. First, we have, well, actually, before I begin, I'll read four names at a time. If the first person can come up to the podium, and the other three queue up at the chairs against the sidewall there, it will help expedite public comments this evening. So the first four individuals, Ron Thiele, Dave Osmer, Marnie Maraldo, and Rick Aramburu.
Get ready for me to keep going whenever.
You're fine.
Okay. Dear City Council and Mayor, thank you for the time and thoughtful consideration you've given to this most important matter. I am Ron Thiele, Superintendent of the Issaquah School District. I live at 600 Northwest Locust Street here in Issaquah. Tonight, I wanted to speak to the district's efforts to work with the Providence Point community over the past three months. The ISD and the Providence Point Umbrella HOA leadership met face-to-face on three separate occasions in the month of November for approximately 10 hours total. The content of those talks was agreed to be held confidential. There has also been no fewer than nine direct email exchanges between myself and the Providence Point Umbrella HOA president during this time, including the exchange of settlement proposals. Since the last city council meeting on December 16, I communicated to the Providence Point Umbrella HOA president that we were holding a special board meeting to discuss a possible settlement agreement. That meeting took place on Thursday, January 9. After that meeting, I followed up with an email letting them know that I would be sending over a proposed settlement agreement by Monday, January 13. We sent that agreement over on the 13th for their consideration. We also included information that we were not treating this as a confidential agreement, that we would be making it public the next day. We did so on Tuesday, the 14th, and that settlement agreement plus site map is currently on the ISD website. After the last ISD board meeting this past Thursday, January 16, I reached back out to the Providence Point HOA president with an offer to meet from our board president and immediate past president. I then heard back on that evening, Friday, the 17th, that the Providence Point Umbrella HOA had rejected our settlement offer. I was disappointed that the compromises we offered were rejected, and that we have not been able to reach a mutually accepted agreement. Others who will be giving testimony tonight will also be speaking to what's in that agreement. Lastly, I just think it's really important for the council and the residents of Providence Point and the community to know, I do think it's important that the commitments that we spelled out, that I have spoken to publicly, and that are spelled out in our most recent settlement agreement, are commitments that we plan on keeping, regardless of the fact that we've been unable to reach an agreement. So I look forward to working in the future with the city and with the residents of the entire community, and of course, those residents who are adjacent to that property in that unique 55 and older community. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. There are hands in the air. Dave?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Dave Osmer. I reside in Providence Point. I expect you know the popular saying, "Those who refuse to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." Well, that's exactly what the school district is doing with this proposal. The history is that when Skyline was built, they skimped on space in the school. Within a few years, Skyline had to relocate their entire ninth-grade class due to severe overcrowding. Then the district had to spend five years and several additional millions of dollars expanding Skyline to reaccommodate their ninth graders. Now they are, by their own admission, doing the same thing with their current proposal, by reducing the size of the school for the sake of building an unnecessary and obtrusive sports stadium. This does not address the long-term overcrowding issue that every person previously speaking on their behalf has referenced. They claim there is no other place to build the school. But what are they going to do when this school becomes overcrowded, probably within a few years after it's built? The obvious answer is to build in capacity for growth on this site by eliminating the stadium and share Skyline's much less invasive facility just down the street. I consider the arrogance of the district's personnel on this subject to be unconscionable, including their refusal to meet with our board subsequent to the December 16 council meeting, and truly negotiate our issues in good faith, but instead trying to bully us into giving away our rights to appeal. I also consider their insistence on building an unneeded redundant stadium on the site an egregious misuse of my tax dollars. So for these reasons, and for the first time in my adult life, I'll be voting against a school levy on February 11, and urging my friends and neighbors to do the same. Furthermore, I urge you to deny this rezone until dramatic, dramatic changes are made in the district's proposal to reduce its negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Dave. And there's hands in the air. Marnie?
Is it okay I brought copies of what I was speaking of?
That's great. Actually, Councilmember Hall will get the clerk to distribute. So she has a copy. Thank you, Marnie.
My name is Marnie Maraldo, and I'm president of the Issaquah School Board. I sent an email earlier today to make sure that you had all received the letter and settlement proposed by the Issaquah School District and submitted to the Providence Point Umbrella Association on January 13. I realize you've been inundated with emails, so let me take this opportunity to read key points from my earlier email in case you weren't able to get to it. There are a few items I'd like to highlight from the proposed settlement agreement. In the most recent conceptual design, a buffer along the Providence Point property is an average of 60 feet. Most of it is at least 35 feet or more, with only a small portion of the southwest part of the property at 20 feet, which is three times the required code, even that. The district commits to using good faith efforts to retain as many existing trees in those areas, that buffer, as is deemed feasible during construction. The district commits to configuring any stadium in the center of the property facing towards 228th Avenue, meaning home seating would be facing 228th Avenue. Although not noted in the agreement, all ISD stadiums have covered home seating. On this property, it would also project crowd noise away from the Providence Point properties. This district commits to limiting community and third-party use of the facility so that the lights would go off no later than 9:15 PM, and the P.A. system could not be used after 8:00 PM when used by outside or third-party groups. And in the case of when the ISD uses them, the district notes that historic use of other facilities for ISD events conclude by 10:00 PM 90% of the time. I didn't mention it in my email, but the district also commits to having no lighting of the baseball fields that sit near the property line, as those fields are used during the spring and summer months, and that would not be needed. The district includes significant queuing lanes to deter traffic backups. The district will conduct quarterly meetings for the Providence Point residents during planning and construction of the two schools, and the district will provide fencing around the school sites. I realize I'm out of time, but I wanted to share those key points, and thank you so much for your decision that you'll be making tonight.
Thank you, Marnie. And there are hands raised in support. Rick?
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Richard Aramburu, here tonight representing the Providence Point Umbrella Association. I have had extensive communications with the council as recently as today, and I hope you've had a chance to read them. I do want to make two points tonight. First of all, the Growth Management Act requires that any comprehensive plan amendments be, I'm quoting here, "coordinated and consistent with the comprehensive plans of adjacent jurisdictions." That includes Sammamish. There has been no coordination or attempt to have consistency with the city of Sammamish in its comprehensive plan. That has not occurred. It's not a part of the proposed ordinance that you've adopted tonight. But I did learn today that certain members of this council and the mayor apparently approached city council members in Sammamish, asking for a letter of support from the Sammamish council for these comprehensive plan amendments. I've shown in my letter, I've identified the portions of the council meeting where this was indicated. I see that as an attempt to try to make up for the complete lack of coordination with the city of Sammamish. As you'll see, by looking at the Sammamish council video, the Sammamish council wisely chose not to accept this 11th-hour attempt to try to show coordination with the city of Sammamish, and rejected the idea of sending a letter of support. You're not in compliance with the statute. It's evident you cannot proceed ahead with this. I also believe that there are some questions of appearance of fairness by those members of the council who approached the city of Sammamish seeking this letter of support, and I ask for identification of those communications and recusal of those persons who so participated and approached the city of Sammamish. Secondly, my time is up, but the materially detrimental criteria of the city's code is evidently not being applied, and there is no meaningful mitigation that is apparent from these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, thank you for your comments, and there are hands in the air. I'm going to make one clarifying remark, and also put a bookmark out there for our attorney to make a comment after about a recusal request. I was called by the city of Sammamish's mayor at the request of the school district that the city of Sammamish would prepare a letter of support. It was not a call from the mayor of the city of Issaquah or city of Issaquah administration to the city of Sammamish council. So that's a fact. And then I will ask our attorney at some point after audience comments to talk about your other question, which is about recusal. And the next speakers, Tisha?
Next, we have Allison Meriwether, Sue Ann Boland, Suzanne Weaver, and Rick Johnson.
Allison, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Allison Meriwether. I live at 2265 Squawk Mountain Loop. I'm a 32-year resident and property owner in the city of Issaquah. I sent a letter to the council earlier today because I know this is not a place for two-way dialogue, so I had some very specific questions, and I look forward to getting a response from somebody in the council in regards to those questions on this topic. But obviously, I'm here in support of the designation for the school district as the CFF. I no longer have kids in the school district. My kids have grown and flown. I have no skin in the game, other than I'm a taxpayer, and I want to maintain the high-quality school district that we have, that we all benefit from, that keeps our property taxes really high. I'm sympathetic to Providence Point for the impact. Trust me, I'm old enough to live in their neighborhood and always thought that's where I would go when I reached that point. But the reality is, is that we've all been subject to the impacts, whether they're negative or positive, of the urban growth boundary. And so we all have to live within those constraints. The district has, in good faith, tried to build outside of that boundary. The King County council will not let us. We have worked so hard in good faith to try to accommodate the growth that has been approved by the city. I, again, feel sympathetic to their cause, but the district has bent over backwards to try to accommodate this and make an acquiesce to try to mitigate the impacts to them. The city has worked with the school district on numerous occasions to cite schools, and you know through history that we've worked very well with the surrounding communities to mitigate any impacts, and have always worked in good faith. And for all of those that live in the community adjacent to school districts, I would say that they've had very little negative impact versus the overall impact of having high-quality, high-class schools in our district. I would like to ask the residents of Providence Point to join with the community in supporting the district and trying to continue to provide that world-class education. The best option for Providence Point and the community as a whole is to have this school district with a new school. That is what maintains our property values and drives our value. We all pay a premium to live here because our school districts are one of the top-ranked school districts in the state. Having two kids that have gone on to college, they said they were more than adequately prepared to go to college and are quite successful. So I, as a taxpayer, want to continue that trend of a world-class education that benefits all of us as taxpayers of this community. So I urge Providence Point to come together with the district and find a way that we can all move forward for the better of our greater community, not just for the students, but for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Lots of hands in the air. Sue Ann? Sue Ann, can you bring it over to the clerk so that she gets a copy, and then we'll distribute? Thank you. So if you have brought handouts this evening and you're speaking, if you could hand them into the clerk, that makes sure that we keep one of them in the permanent record, and then we'll make sure they have them while you're talking.
Okay. All right. I'm Sue Ann Boland. I'm a resident of Providence Point and president of the Umbrella Association. You so graciously granted us an extra month for discussions with the school district to try to reach an agreement. However, the school district has declined all requests to meet since the city council denied the SEPA DNS appeal in early December. The current layout for Providence, the Providence Heights site, which is one of the handouts, it blows up the different measurements for the buffer that they describe as averaging 60 feet. There are very few of these measurements that even are anywhere near 60 feet. The second handout gives you a visual of what, this is a 140-foot buffer from the snow line to Issaquah Middle School, 140 feet. None of the buffer measurements are more than a fraction of that on the drawings. So it's very little mitigation in terms of visual or sound. The school district says they'll be good neighbors, but they continue to ignore Providence Point. What makes you think that they will suddenly want to be good neighbors once you approve rezoning? Ron is correct. They did send us a settlement offer a few weeks back. The settlement offer was what is already on the website and has been since September 10th. No mitigation whatsoever of Providence Point concerns, but they wanted Providence Point to sign away our legal right to appeal anything associated with this project going forward. That's not a settlement offer. I'm sorry. It would be ludicrous for us to sign something like that. Municipal code indicates rezoning should not be detrimental to the surrounding property. After five months of testimony from Providence Point residents, we hope you understand the very serious detrimental impact this decision can have on these tax-paying, voting seniors, and we hope you hold the ISD accountable for their complete lack of willingness to meet with us to try to mitigate our issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue Ann. Hands in the air. And Suzanne Weaver?
I'm taller than she is. Suzanne Weaver, I'm on the Issaquah School Board. I live in Sammamish. I'd like to address why the district offered a settlement agreement to the residents of Providence Point. First and foremost, we heard feedback that the community did not trust the district to honor its word, and that made me sad, but that's why we chose to provide this in a legal framework. The school board and the superintendent worked together to draft an agreement that specifically addressed all of the concerns that we heard from that community. Board President Maraldo discussed a lot of these already, so I'm going to go through them quickly. We addressed buffers. We addressed good faith efforts to retain mature trees whenever possible. Now, obviously, when you're moving dirt around, sometimes there's a safety hazard. We can't promise everything, but retaining as many trees as we can is fiscally responsible for us as well. Stadium issues have already been addressed. We've also talked about the possibility of raised burms around the stadium, if that's at all possible. And again, we won't know till we move dirt. Restrictions on evening events, use of the P.A. system by third parties, no lighting on baseball fields, no additional practice field, encouragement of car pools, extended drop-off queues, implementations of regular meetings with Providence Point residents for updates, for question and answer, and for hearing their concerns. While the agreement may not have proposed the exact solution that the Providence Point residents desired, we wanted to provide feedback that each of the concerns that we were aware of had been heard and had been acknowledged. The district genuinely wants to be a good neighbor, and that's in everyone's interest. And this settlement agreement reflects our commitment to do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Hands in the air. Rick, come on up.
Thank you. Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rick Johnson. My wife, Kim, and I own and live in our home at 22019 Southeast 40th Court. It is Providence Point. Just from my background, I'm a recently retired associate professor of project management. I want to offer a little different perspective. Before moving here, I once served with the city of Nashville in New Hampshire's Zoning Board of Adjustment. Nashville is about 90,000 people. Compared, when we look at roughly 35,000 here and the 62,000 in Sammamish, and they're somewhat same in numbers. There's a little bit different in demographics. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, we were a quasi-judicial entity. We were citizens appointed by a mayor and confirmed by the Alderman at council, similar to your makeup here. And we were to grant relief to zoning laws that most effectively manage the land use. As a board, we enjoyed a lot of success. We balanced the quality of life for applicants. Often, it was lots, setback adjustments numerous times. It was property developers coming in with high-density proposals. We would offer them the ability to either stand with what they proposed, or to perhaps table and go back and sharpen their architectural pencils a bit. In other words, bring the density down and do it so it's more reasonable for the entire community. If an application abutted another town, such in our case, we're a border town to Massachusetts, we had a regional issue. Anything that happened there, we would make sure that body was aware, that entity was aware immediately. For the most part, I did a good job. I was reappointed. I briefly chaired the Zoning Board of Adjustment until my wife had the good sense to get an assignment that moved us out here to Washington. I was pleased with what we did, but here's the point. We got it wrong once. The applicant in one case appealed to the Superior Court, which is above our district court and below the Supreme Court in the state of New Hampshire. We had a really good city attorney at the time. He knew we blew it.
Mr. Johnson, you've reached your time. Please summarize.
I will, given that you've just pointed that to me. Here's the thing, the land use thing, we're not doing it right. I'm seeing a movie being made here that I hate to see it again. Land is precious. Why is the school We should, why is the, why is the school district trying to force a stadium on us? The cry is for classrooms. The cry is for classrooms and strategic growth. One of you, as a member, said something about when you need a fed school.
Mr. Johnson, can you summarize?
I will. I'll say it this way. In project management, if you want something bad, you will get it bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Tisha, the next four speakers.
Jody Mull, Nora Albert, Anne Moore, and Daphne Gann.
So am I up here? Jody, come on up here.
Hi, my name's Jody Mull. I live at 6061 167th Avenue Southeast in Bellevue. My, all of my three girls attended the Issaquah School District and are in college or beyond. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I know you have heard a great deal on this topic. We all know that we need a school, and I do understand that Providence Point is not happy about this happening. We have all been sad and disappointed when the land next to us has changed or developed. I personally had a beautiful field that I used to look out on in my backyard, and I would have loved to have had it stayed the same. But I live within the urban growth boundary, and I knew that someday that that would change, and it did. The property that we're talking about is within the urban growth boundary, next to Providence Point, and they had to know someday it was going to change. If I wanted to continue that view, then it was up to me to either purchase the land or find someone else that would buy it to create the vision that I wanted. If Providence Point wanted it, which eminent domain happened, that wasn't a possibility, but they had the ability to do something besides tell it, well, that's not, wrong point. They have, it's in with the urban growth boundary. Development is going to happen there. I saw the agreement the district presented Providence Point and personally feel like the district has gone over and beyond. And those things that those giving, they're giving up, those things are switching around are causing taxpayer dollars, dollars that we weren't going to have to spend, but we are to be a good neighbor. I also don't really understand why this one group is getting so much speaking time.
Can I ask you not to make verbal comments, because I know you all feel super passionate about it, but there may be things, there may be things said on both sides that will get you upset, and I ask you to restrain yourself. I'll have to call for a recess if we can't. Jody, can you finish up?
Speaking time, I mean, for the last five months, they've had more of a voice than any other group has had over what they want. That I don't understand. That's what I mean by speaking time. I also do want to say, I'm on an alumni foundation for one of the major universities in our state, and we are looking at putting a retirement facility on our campus, right next to the stadium. ASU has one. Whitworth in Spokane has, is working together with a retirement facility. It's not a bad thing. It's a good thing. And so, I don't understand why they're so upset about having the noise of a school next to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Some hands in the air. And the next up is Nora.
Hi, my name is Nora Albert. I'm a resident of Providence Point. Better. I had submitted a long email, but will address three issues. But before I do that, I just want to say, every resident in Providence Point values an excellent education for our children. And yes, we have had a lot of good time, thank you for the time that we've had to speak, because it's our community that's at risk. And yes, we have skin in the game. Number one, the proposed buffer along the property is not sufficient at all. There's no mature trees that will help block the view and muffle some of the noise. Instead of, most of the trees will be cleared, and a portion of them will be replaced with small immature trees. This is counter to the Planning Policy Commission's recommendations. I'm going to skip to the next one. It makes no sense to cite a high school and elementary school on property that's completely surrounded by a retirement community and assisted living facilities. The vision for a tranquil retirement community was established more than 30 years ago by the Sisters of Providence. Folks moved to Providence Point for a quiet and serene retirement. Changing the zoning from single-family housing to CFFF to allow for high school with sports stadium, which seems to be the priority, will be detrimental to the Providence Point community. It is common to locate high schools in neighborhoods with families and school-aged children. It is unheard of to cite a high school on lands completely surrounded by retirement care living. The school district is selectively implementing the urban school guidelines. They are proposing multi-story schools crammed into a limited acreage while including the sports fields and amenities that a suburban school with significantly more acreage would have. They are ignoring the intent of urban guidelines that encourage schools to share stadiums and sports fields. There is a large new sports field right across 228th Avenue, but they refuse to consider using that, instead insist on building a dedicated stadium for this new high school. All about sports.
Thank you, Nora. Hands in the air. Anne.
Thank you. My name is Anne Moore. I'm on the Issaquah School Board, and I'm a resident of Bellevue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'd like to address the idea of shared facilities, but first I must speak to the importance of our fields being considered teaching spaces. All high school students must take a minimum of 1.5 credits of physical education to graduate. To teach PE, spaces such as our multipurpose field, softball, baseball fields, as well as our gyms, are critically important. I know it has been suggested that the new high school should share a field with another school, but it would be impossible for our students to get an adequate education if they spend much of their 50-minute period being transported by bus to another facility. The nearest field, as she's mentioned, is Pine Lake Middle School, but yet this field is already used throughout the day, providing PE instruction to the middle school students. It's also busy after school, providing after-school sports to the middle school students. Our fields are also used for after-school sports at the high school. Football, soccer, track and field, cross-country, as well as activities such as dance, drill, and cheer teams, plus marching band. These sports and activities are what engages so many of our students and keeps them coming to school. Again, without a field for the new high school, these students would have to be transported to and from another facility for them to practice. The transportation alone would have a continual negative environmental impact. Our fields are used by the City of Issaquah Parks and Recreation Department and other club sports, such as lacrosse and cricket. In your park plan, they specifically call out the inter-local agreement by saying that they honor the partnership with the Issaquah School District as a significant component of the city's park system. Even land use policy G7 speaks to the desire for the shared facilities being between the city and the school district, not necessarily having a schools have to share facilities. The schools within ISD from this park plan offers a wide variety of fields, gyms, and other amenities that are used by the Parks and Recreation Department. The new high school would increase the facility space available to the city. Even if the new high school had a field but did not have stands for an audience to watch events, then official games would have to be housed at another school, such as Issaquah High School. This would double the number of home games that the Issaquah High School stadium would need to handle, which would be a challenge for scheduling, increased wear and tear on that field, and the increased traffic in Old Town and along Second Avenue. Additionally, the significant increase in the use of that field would severely limit any third-party or city use of our field. So I ask you to approve the CFF zoning of the Providence Heights parcels so that the Issaquah School District can build much-needed schools, which can be new resources for the city and the Issaquah community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Daphne? Your hands in the air.
Hello, I'm Daphne Gann, and I do live in Providence Point. And I have had the opportunity over the past couple of months to listen to all the zoning and rezoning proposals put forward to the council. And you know, zoning is a process, and if you noticed, you've gone through the process and you looked at the other rezones and you said, oh, we're going to take those rezones and make them more compatible with the area surrounding them. That's what you did on those rezones. But on the Providence Heights rezone, what you're doing is you're taking a piece of property that's zone residential, surrounded by residential houses, and you're making it more intensive. That is against the common and probably conventional uses of rezoning. Now, I'm going to talk about the high school. They said that they needed more classrooms for their increasing students, and I say that this site is a very poor solution. Why do I say that? In a previous life, and it was a long time ago, I was a property and construction manager, and I did development all over western Washington. I was one of the first women who ever did that. And I tell you, I, it was tough. And I checked your website. I looked at the community, and by golly, I think there are other solutions for the problem that the school board faces. Better solutions than making a bad rezone. Now, here's the problem. Here you have Skyline, here you have the new school. All the new growth is going to be here on the east and there on the south. And what are you going to do? You're going to put those children in buses, and you drive around and pick them up, and then you drive them to the school, and you're going to have those school buses are pumping out carbon emissions the whole time. For the next 20 years, you are condemning the school district and the City of Issaquah to do just awful things to those children. I say, the fact that this is not a conventional use of zoning, that it is rotten for the people who live in Providence Point, and it's awful for the children, and I care about the environment, and I know each one of you. I've heard you talk about your desire for open space and how much you like the environment, and I do too. And I think, I will say again, everybody in Providence Point loves the children, and we really wish the city council would keep the school district from making a really bad mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Hands up in support. Tisha, do we have additional speakers signed up?
Yes. Tom Mullins, Ron Imhoff, Jacob Cooper, and Harry Stauffer.
Tom, come on up.
Thank you, members of the city council. My name is Tom Mullins, and I am the director of Capitol Projects for the Issaquah School District. I am here this evening to clarify the timelines for the permitting and construction of the high school and elementary school project so that we can meet our planned fall '22 opening. As previously stated in public testimony, school construction is unique. Unique in the fact that if we do not complete the construction of a project, attain occupancy, and are able to move in for a September start, we are delayed in the opening of that school by one full year. With that said, if you, the city council, vote to move the proposed redesignation and rezone ahead tonight, we will have six months to get through the SDP Site Development Permit, the MSP Master Site Plan, and the building review and issuance processes. That will leave 23 months of construction with an assumed construction start date of August 1st of this year. That puts us at a September '22 opening. The ISD Design and Construction Team is ready to work collaboratively with the City of Issaquah staff to make these timelines work. Again, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Hands of support. Ron.
Hello, my name is Ron Imhoff. My wife and I have lived at Providence Point in Issaquah for about two years. I hope you read and considered the points in the email I sent you, and will include those in your discussion tonight. The particular issues I will highlight right now are the impact to Sumamish because the property fronts on 228th, and what has been done to coordinate this rezoning with them. The need for joint CIPA responsibility is discussed at a previous council meeting, and the enforcement of environmental protection of the tree buffer by zoning a portion of the property to CFOS as the Planning Policy Commission recommended. Please don't approve any changes until all issues are addressed. Thank you for considering.
Thank you, Ron. Hands of support in the air. Jake.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to go through a few numbers if I could. I'm Jacob Cooper. I'm the chief financial and operating officer for the school district. On the financial side, I do want to say that a project this size has inflationary pressures of about $700,000 to $800,000 a month. So anytime there will be a delay, or if there is a delay, at construction, inflation's running about 5.5%. Our construction costs are about $165 million to $170 million on this project. So any delay has an inflationary cost to the district. Also, in the proposed settlement agreement, there's 6.6 acres of buffer, and nearly $1 million per, $1 million dollars per acre. That's $6.6 million of taxpayer money that's being set aside to hopefully mitigate PPUA's concern. That is five-plus acres more than is required by the city zoning, the current CFF zoning. So that's five-plus acres more than is currently required by city zoning. I also wanted to talk about the CFF zoning itself and the inception, and there have been some claims that it was never meant to be intended to apply to a 40-acre parcel such as this. I'll recall these timelines briefly. July of '16, we entered an eminent domain on the property, public notice and advertisement. The board took action. September of '17, Providence Point and the school district's acquisition of the property was referenced in a council meeting, along with the first initial discussions on the CFF zone. December of '17, CFF zone was approved by council with full awareness that this site was being acquired by the school district and the eminent domain was going to stay. Okay? So I just want to reiterate that all along the CFF zone and how it was applied was meant to provide clarity to the school district during property acquisition time, and obviously, we're still working on that clarity as a group. And briefly, I'll address the classroom issue. 2016 bond had 160 classrooms in it, which we hope to keep that promise of the voters. The stadium, which is the bleachers itself, run between $1 million and 1/2 and $2 million, that's the equivalent of one to two classrooms. So when you talk about sacrificing a stadium over classrooms, you're talking about one to two classrooms versus a stadium of bleachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Harry? And hands in support.
Madam Mayor, the city council, I do appreciate your giving us the time to hear us out, and as the mayor suggested, maybe it's all been said, but I've been looking for a bottom line, excuse me, and I think it is that, to my mind, no reasonable person could look at this site and say that it is a good location for what the school district is proposing. The real mystery to me is how the educated people who run the school district could have gotten themselves to this point, and I fear it is that no one ever stood up when they were going down this path and had the courage to say, this is wrong. Fortunately, our city council still has that opportunity. And if I have a few seconds left, I'll just add, this thing about renting out the stadium to third parties, this is a new wrinkle to me. It came out in the so-called settlement agreement. I would just hope that it doesn't include monster truck rallies, okay?
Thank you, Harry. Tisha, are there additional folks signed up this evening? And then we're hands raised.
Yes, we have Sue Reed, Jeff Mattson, Charles Herbert, and David Miller.
Hi, my name is Sue Reed. I live in Clahani. I am here as a parent. I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate all of the Providence Point residents, as my mother is one of them. I have an emotional plea today, and I apologize if I tear up. I have two amazing girls, a sixth grader who is at Beaver Lake Middle School and a ninth grader at Skyline High School. This is my ninth grader. She's struggling with the lack of connection due to the overcrowding and the thinly spread resources and teachers. She does feel the overcrowding at the high school is likely contributing to student anxiety and depression, which may be related to the overdoses and attempted suicides that occurred this past fall. She wanted to be here today, but it's finals week, and she has three finals tomorrow. So she told me that I could say that for her. My biggest concern regarding the school overcrowding is my sixth grader. She's a bright, wonderful kid who loves to help people and spends several hours Monday helping my mom at Providence Point move things around so they could put new windows in her condo. condo. However, she's also dyslexic. She has ADHD and anxiety, and that would make a situation like the Skyline High School as it is now an almost certain fail for her. It's the kids who are hurt in this situation. It's the kids you hurt if you continue to oppose the new school, my kids, and literally thousands and thousands of other kids. Look at their faces and ask yourselves if you would want your kids or grandkids to be put in a situation like this of severe school overcrowding and decreased resources that will undoubtedly affect their future. These kids need you. They need your support. They need your kindness. They need your generosity, and they need your wisdom. Please, please, please work together to support the kids of our community and allow a new high school to be built as soon as possible. 2022 would be when this daughter starts a freshman year in high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue. Hands in the air.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Mattson. I live in Providence Point. And the remarks I'm going to make have been sent to you. I'm just going to summarize what they say for the sake of time. I have four points here. I'm concerned about how the procedures have been going along. The city of Issaquah, I believe, is exercising bad governance that may have to be settled in a court of law at some time down the line if we don't get things going in the right way. Also, this is a, the ISD has failed to dialogue with Providence Point, as was promised in the December 16th meeting. They have sent us documentation, but we have tried to reach out, and we have not been able to get with them. There are still too many open questions regarding environmental impact studies, and they should have been resolved a long time ago. Some of you on the council realize that. They need to be done now. And then my feeling is stacking more schools on the north end of the district and not taking advantage of the schools that are already there through refurbishment and enlargement is a gross misuse of taxpayer and ISD funds. I'd like to just expand my comments on that first item that I alerted you to about the bad governance. As I look at how the process has been proceeded for the past several months, it's become very muddy to me. If you refer to Exhibit A in your, in your, the paperwork that was handed out to you earlier, on page seven, it says that, quote, "The city is considered the applicant for a community facility's redesignation and rezone, and an application is not required." This was very puzzling to me. Who's building this school, the city, or the school district? I believe that the city council and the school district need to be independent of each other. This designation shows that the city is collaborating with ISD's, with ISD for the school district's benefit. You are commingling the functions. This is bad governance on the part of the city. It is unethical and an abuse of the process. It's a crime of self-dealing, and if it is approved without more work being done, it may be that the only settlement could be in court. My time is over, but I've expanded the other points in the memo that you have. If it's not before you, it will be soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Charles? No hands of support.
Esteemed council, thank you for meeting with me today. My name is Charlie Herbert. I live at 485 Mount Defiance, just up the hill. I live here, I work here, I shop here, I vote here. This community is very important to me. I moved here five years ago from Albuquerque, New Mexico. We moved here specifically to get out of New Mexican School District. Within the last five years, 2009 to 2014, they were in the bottom five in the nation. My wife and I promptly decided this is not where we want to, Albuquerque was not where we want to raise our kids. We looked around the country, and we decided that Washington is not only a beautiful state, but specifically, the city of Issaquah is a community that we feel wonderful raising our kids in. I've been very happy with my time here and plan on living here for a very long time in the future. We started to notice some issues with my older son before we left, and we went through multiple testings and a bit of a battle with the Albuquerque school system there in having him tested. And eventually, we were told that he shows signs of autism, but at the level of education that they provided there, they could not officially diagnose him. Within three months of living here, he was diagnosed with autism, and we worked with the school to get him on an individualized educational program. It has been immensely helpful, and I now believe firmly that he will grow up to be a successful and independent adult, something that's always been a concern as we raise him. Now, as we deal with a community that I have seen grown in five years here, I've watched an amazing amount of housing go up, high-density housing in particular, apartment buildings, townhomes, with a bit of a concerning lack of development of infrastructure to handle that growth in our city. I can understand why people want to live here. I want to live here. I moved here. I'm part of the problem. If we don't continue to grow the city in a healthy way, this will be a recipe for disaster, and we will deal with severe overcrowding, not only in the schools, which is a problem, but on our roads. Wow, that's quick time. So please support the rezoning for the school. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to my family, and it means a lot to the people who are moving here who are part of the growing community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Lots of hands of support.
Hi. I'm Dave Miller. I'm a resident of Providence Point, and I'm a property owner and a voter. And I'm not sure that I oppose any kind of school development on that property. I'm not saying that. But I'm not in love with the current proposal. It seems to me you're shoehorning too much physical plant and athletic facilities into the space that's available, and the net result is it's pushing out into the community, our community, and the assisted facility building right next door. And that's why the buffer is so small. There's just too much stuff up there. I would like to see a different proposal or a smaller proposal that gives more room for buffers, that takes account of some of the concerns these, our people have raised. Also, I used to be the environmental officer for a federal agency, and this process needs an environmental impact statement, which I think you're planning to do. But at the present time, it seems like you're getting a proposal that's already cooked, that's already, you know, in full final form, rather than just zoning the property maybe for school use or whatever, and then giving more time to develop the actual proposal itself and include more mitigating factors and a larger buffer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And hands in support. Tisha, do we have additional folks signed up?
Yes, two more. Sidney Mullings and Diane Phillips.
Sidney, come on up.
Hi. Thanks for having me back. I'm Sidney Mullings. I sit on the Issaquah School Board. I live in Issaquah in Issaquah Highlands. Since I was last here, I think the thing I want to express is my personal experience. I think it was really important, actually, the last conversation we had where we talked about the importance of continued dialogue, and taking that time to have the conversation allowed, for me personally, to take some time to listen to residents, to visit the location personally, as well as to review many, many hours of the council's video. And I think it's really critical that we've heard, you know, differing points of view. And I personally went into the conversations on the school board saying, "Hey, I want to make sure we're hearing all of the concerns, and I want to make sure that we are responding in a way that hits all of those known concerns." I feel personally that we've done that. I feel it's unfortunate. There's maybe been some misinformation or miscommunication about a lack of partnership or a lack of meeting. They have clearly happened. So I think, as we, as I stand here, what I want to confirm is that we're operating in good faith. I also want to talk about the fact that there is no more property. I think we believe there's some other place to go, there's some other place to build, there's some other option, and there isn't one. So I think it's really important that we figure out how to move forward and how to move forward in the best way. I also think it's important to talk about the idea of fields as classrooms, which I know Ann got to. I think there's some perspective that this is about late-night rabble-rousing, but it's about daytime learning. It's about children having the ability to be out and be active, and that's what these fields are about. So I just wanted to convey from my perspective that listening and clarity are super important to me. I took that away as a personal charge from this body, and spent a lot of time doing that. And this body, and our, the ISD has moved forward in a way that meets that. We've been clear in our proposals, and we really do hope to move forward in good faith.
Thank you, Sidney. Hands in support. Diane? Come on up.
Hi. My name's Diane Phillips, and I'm from Providence Point.
Diane, can I get you to pull the microphone down a little bit so we can hear you better? Thank you.
My name's Diane Phillips. I'm from Providence Point. And I feel that we've been pushed into a situation that we have to say, "Rezone, no rezone." And I'm totally for kids. I used to teach. I think there should be a compromise, a win-win situation. One of the biggest things that's causing problems is the stadium/sport field. And I think if they were shared and we didn't have those, it would also save the community a lot of money than building new resources. If that isn't feasible, and you feel you have to build a new stadium or sports field, I think you need to look at the plan. If you would reposition those and not pick right by the retirement communities that have the buildings there and move the sports fields away from us so we would still have more of our tranquility, I think it could be a win-win situation. I know you're voting on a zone/rezone, and I don't know if you can vote on it and with contingencies that they have to follow. And one of these would be putting the buffer in, a decent buffer, and also replacing the existing, you know, the fields in the stadium they want to build or share one. And I think everyone would win and be happy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Hands in the air. We have a couple minutes more for additional folks who may want to speak either in favor or in opposition or just comments on the proposal itself. Anybody wishing to do so, want to raise their hand? Can I get the four of you to come on over to the seats and... Okay. How many of you are speaking in favor of? I actually know the school district's legal counsel would also like to speak, so between the three of you, pick somebody, and we'll let you go next while they're sorting it out. So Ann, we're going to have council speak first. Oh, thanks.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Denise Stifarm, and I'm the legal counsel for the Issaquah School District. Just really briefly, I just wanted to touch on the vegetated buffer that the district spoke to tonight and distinguish that from the Planning Policy Commission buffer with the CF, open space. Sure, sorry about that. As Mr. Cooper indicated, the district is committed to doing a 6.6-acre buffer that essentially runs along the border of the property that is surrounded by Providence Point. And this is different from what the Planning Policy Commission recommended, which was not done with any input or discussion with the district. But that proposal was essentially to carve out just one 6-acre parcel and leave that as open space. The reason that the district can commit to more than that, the 6.6, is because, and they're doing it without a fully-designed project, so they're taking some risk. But it's because they're able to work around that buffer in a way that they could not do with one parcel completely isolated. And frankly, it provides a better, full picture of providing that mitigation. And it is going to be a vegetated buffer above and beyond what would otherwise be required in the CF zone. To the extent that the council wants to follow the Planning Policy Commission recommendation, the district has stated this both in written and oral testimony, that we ask that you not take any action at all and leave the property in its current SF/SL zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Tim, would you like to come up and speak?
Thank you. My name's Tim Brown. I live in Providence Point and a longtime Issaquah resident, as I said before. I go back to 1949. I was a graduate of Issaquah High School. I was a superintendent, superintendent body president in 1959. So I think my credentials, as far as being for schools in the district, is strong. But I don't think this is, my point is made by others, this is a terrible place to put this school. It jams so much into that that they have no reasonable mitigation. I'm just amazed at what they expect, that you can put into 37 acres plus 6 acres when something like Skyline High School has 37 acres itself. It just isn't reasonable. Also, the school district, I'm just shocked, has had acted in such bad faith. We have a government affairs committee, which relates to government, like the city, where we negotiate on a light. They have refused to meet with us since 2016. We have asked repeatedly. Isn't just stonewalling the last month, this has gone on for three years. I just, and to people who actually stay here and say they're opening communication by sending us a written document that asks us to give up our legal rights to appeal, that buggers the imagination. How can that be anything like good faith? I just ask you, in balance with the last comment from Providence Point, it's just too much and too much space, and this is not reasonable to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Hands in the air, but you're not quite last. I'm going to do one more in favor and one more in opposition or others. So between the three ladies there? There you go. Ann?
Hello there. My name is Ann Haynes. I'm a student at Gibson Lake High School. Tonight, I wanted you to hear from a variety of students from our comprehensive high schools. Unfortunately, it is finals week, and nobody else had the bandwidth to come speak to you, so they have submitted their comments to me, and I'm summarizing them for you. They say that their schools are overcrowded. Students from IHS say that their class sizes make it impossible for them to get the help that they need from their teachers. They say that their hallways are packed, their cafeterias are uncomfortable, many of them sit in the hallways at lunch. They say they feel for their teachers with high numbers of students in multiple classroom locations who have to travel between classrooms during their break periods and passing periods to get materials, to take their supplies, their graded assignments. They ask you to build this new high school so that the next generation of students, the next generation of students may have a better chance with their education. We ask, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Hands in the air. Steve, I see you hanging around back there. Are you going to be our last speaker this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the privilege. So two pieces. One is an email I sent regarding everything else except for the rezoning. I won't talk about that to respect the two minutes that we have. Just to refer you to that. The second is to talk about the rezoning piece. I took a moment to look up revised code of Washington 43.21C.460 that tells me we should oppose the rezoning. Just in brief, Section 2, "If a lead authority identifies an instance described in subsection 1 of this section, it still must consider whether or not the action has an impact on the particular elements or elements of the environment in question." That was not done. The city, in discussions, simply decided to bypass that and talk about Phase 1, Phase 2. They was never asked whether or not additional traffic would have an impact or whether or not a stadium would have impact. Any reasonable person would think that those things would have an impact, and the city didn't even consider whether those had an impact. So I'm looking at each of you to apply what city policy, city law is, state law, not because, just because it impacts Providence Point, but because one-by-one places in Issaquah may be picked off because we're not following environmental policy. And I need you to act as a brake and enforcement mechanism. I, too, have concerns that maybe we're putting, not applying good policy, but we're not overall applying good policy citywide, not just because of Providence Point. So please, consider that going forward. I know as a taxpayer, I would also have concerns if we even skip a one classroom to approve a stadium. That bothers me. We don't look at stadium use policies citywide or within the whole Issaquah School District to better manage that policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And hands in support. So I want to thank you all for coming this evening and for signing up and being so respectful as folks were talking. That's very helpful. That wraps up an additional hour of audience comments, in particular, on this rezoning. And we're going to move at this point in time on our agenda to committee regional reports. I did want to let folks know that the overflow room only has one person in it tonight, so the majority of you are here. There is not a big crowd in the other room, although we were set up for it. So we'll start with committee and regional reports and we'll start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. So last Friday, January 17th, the Regional Affordable Housing Committee held its first meeting of the year. It was also my first opportunity to sit on a regional committee as an Issaquah City Council member. So the purpose of this meeting was to begin giving feedback to committee staff regarding recommended amendments to the housing chapter of the countywide planning policies. These policies serve as a framework for local comprehensive plans and development regulations for the county and its 39 cities. They also serve as an opportunity to enforce consistency, concurrence, and accountability in the space of housing affordability. And we actually weren't able to discuss everything that we wanted to in the two-hour timeframe. It was really exciting and there was a lot to discuss. So a special meeting is going to be scheduled for a date TBD in February. Otherwise, our next regularly scheduled meeting is on Monday, March 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
I'm happy to report that I was appointed to the Healthier Here Committee and their first meeting will be on February 6th.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting on Friday, January 10th. On the docket was a conversation about transportation electrification, namely how Metro is looking to expand from its current, I believe it's eight electric buses to 120 over the next several years and how they're evaluating vendors on that and looking to lead the way in standardization. And then we also talked about the post-I-976 implications for the 2020 legislative session. And while that is a big, meaty conversation, the kind of information that they said is, yes, the state is still collecting CAR TAB money, but that money is being sequestered in case they need to refund it to taxpayers. And the next information we should get on that, there's a February decision expected, but that will likely be appealed. And then hopefully, we should have a final outcome by October so that we can use that for kind of our future ideas. But that will be fun coming up right before the November election and we'll see how the governor handles that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on January 9th. And in that meeting, we heard the chief's concern that we could have a drier-than-normal summer. And so he's already starting to work on a contingency plan, saying it's never too early to start planning. And we'll have more information on that coming up soon. They're also ramping up to start work on their second-ever strategic plan. And we also got a report out on Station 78 on May Valley Road. During our pretty significant rain event a few weeks ago, that station was flooded pretty badly with about six inches of water throughout, which involved the septic system up the walls and did a lot of damage. It was from water from a pond that overflowed in an unusual manner on neighboring property. They're working on permanent fixes to that station. Also, the Eastside Fire is joining the Southeast Legislative Transportation Coalition. That is a coalition of entities in South King County that is working on transportation improvements to, the networks that they all agree are in their common interest. And Eastside Fire is joining that because of its interest in having good response times as related to safety on SR 18. And the Finance and Administrative Committee of that board will meet tomorrow. And the only agenda item that I am aware of tomorrow is to start the discussion on a possible, a different governance model. So I will report back after that committee at our next meeting. And the only other report I have is next Thursday, the new recruits from the Fire Academy will be honored at a ceremony in Kent. So I will be attending that and probably with Councilmember Chris Way. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Wednesday, January 15th, in Sea-Tac, SCA had its committee appointee training. And let me tell you, it was so exciting. We had seven elected officials there. And there were years where I would be the only Issaquah-elected official. So to have, I mean, we had the best turnout of any city, any SCA member city. And we have a number of great appointments this year and it was just, it was so thrilling to see us punch above our weight, so to speak, regionally. And I'm just excited about this year. I'll also mention, there will be a SCA pick meeting on Wednesday, February 12th. Agenda to be determined.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President Wright.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday, January 16th, the Salmon Recovery Council of Wyra Eight met. Wyra Eight is our watershed. And we discussed several topics. One of the topics is we discussed our plan for the upcoming year for 2020, what topics we'll be discussing in the meetings. And one of the focuses will be around climate change and the impacts of that, as well as the potential ways that cities can adapt and can mitigate the effects of climate change on salmon. We also discussed proposed additions to state legislative priorities in a draft letter. This was largely the, similar to our past legislative priorities in terms of the need for habitat protections, as well as culverts that are fish-friendly. But additionally, there is one additional, one additional topic which was raised, which is the need to support efforts to clarify and statute that recipients of state grant funding for salmon recovery projects should not be subject to sales tax for receipt of the grant or for direct services to implement the grant. So this is something that is a potential issue at the state and is something that Salmon Recovery will be tracking because it affects the ability to actually use these grants for habitat restoration. And then we also discussed Lake Washington Ship Canal predation research findings. And specific to Issaquah, a lot of the predation work will potentially also be useful in terms of better understanding our predation situation in Lake Semamish and how that affects our salmon populations. The next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be March 19th. And then additionally, I am one of three councilmembers that's on the ad hoc meeting for Title 18 to discuss the land use code and changes to the land use code. So the Title 18 ad hoc committee met on January 9th. This was the second meeting of the committee. And the committee discussed the schedule for releasing draft updated code. We have an expectation that proposed significant changes to the code will be discussed by the committee, but then shared with the full council prior to releasing draft documents for public review. So we will have many touchpoints for community input and those will be also touchpoints with the full council. And the committee also reviewed the webpage and made some suggestions on messaging. One thing that's important to note is that it's not a complete, it's not a completely new code. Many of the changes are to clarify and to make it easier to read and easier to understand. And so we wanted to make that clear from the webpage about the actual scope of the work that's going on. And we also discussed how we will be communicating with the public for when specific topics are coming forward. And again, that will be coming forward, so there will be opportunities for the public to talk when specific items in the land use code are discussed at council. The next meeting of the committee will be January 23rd and we'll start actually discussing what those topics might be, that we'll get more into the meat of the actual issues. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. For the mayor's report this evening, I have two items. The first is that there will be no, there will not be an executive session this evening. And the second one, I feel a little bit like Linda Springman, our first speaker at Audience Comments stole my thunder, because it was a snow report. So I, I'm still going to give it, even though she sort of stole my headline. So while we're not through January yet, I think I'd like to share some data on that recent January snowstorm. Between the 12th and 17th, our Public Works op staff plowed and treated 1,100 miles of roadway, working 12-hour shifts, 24 hours a day, for a total of almost 1,300 labor hours. Using 164 tons of salt, 250 tons of sand, 3,800 gallons of de-icer. The city of Issaquah and the city of Semamish also coordinated during the event and helped each other out with shortages that each had with sand and/or salt. The cost to date for this storm is just over $100,000. In addition to the snow event, the city also prepared for strong winds and associated power outages through the Issaquah Incident Management Team and a combined effort with Eastside Fire and Rescue, IMT volunteers, Issaquah Communications Support Team, and Issaquah's IMT staff. So the wind event did not develop as forecasted intensities and only a minor response was necessary. Cleanup efforts for storms like this will continue and take up to six to eight weeks, barring another storm coming in. I wanted to give special thanks to the entire Public Works Operations Department and specifically the supporting team members, who you may not see out on the plows. Our mechanics are also on duty during these events to ensure that we keep the plows on the road 24/7. Here's just a small sampling of positive communities from, comments from community members that we received online. In total, close to 12,000 people actively engaged with our almost 70 social media posts during the snow event. In addition, our traffic cameras webpage received 20,000 views. Thanks to the community members who cleared walks in front of their houses, allowing folks to get around on foot easier. The city does clear sidewalks at city-owned public facilities and relies on businesses and residents to clear sidewalks in front of their property. Members, good neighbors, always check on your neighbors and help those who cannot clean their own walkways or adjacent sidewalks. There were very few abandoned vehicles during this event, so thank you for minimizing trips or attempting to get home in vehicles that were not, have been suitable for snow and ice-covered roads. Abandoned vehicles can severely limit crewability to clear the streets, so we're very appreciative of how our community chose to stay home and avoid the hills this time. If you cannot safely get home in your vehicle, best practice is to park and call for a ride home. A final reminder to all of us, make sure you have your home and your family set up for both major and minor events like this past snowstorm, so that you can adapt to the restrictions on our ability to move around town safely and reduce the amount of driving in difficult weather conditions. And thank you to Linda Springman for starting that. That was awesome. So that concludes the mayor's report and we will proceed to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed? They have. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Can I get a request for a motion?
Yes. I'm moved to adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's published agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. So at this point in time, with the council's agreement, I'd like to take a five-minute break before we get into the regular business item. This will allow you to do what you need to do before we settle in for the night. Five minutes. Thanks.
Like run away? No, you can't run away.
Thank you. We are back from our five-minute break. We're moving into regular business. AB 7787-2019 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Amendments. The ask before council this evening is adoption of the ordinance. This item has been postponed from the December 16, 2019 council meeting to this evening. First, I'd like to ask our city legal council to address a couple of comments that came up during audience comments. Mr. Haney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of issues were raised by Mr. Rambrue, and I wanted to address those. The issue of whether or not council members should recuse themselves, I wanted to address right at the outset because, obviously, if anyone had to recuse themselves, that needed to be done right at the outset. I disagree with Mr. Rambrue's statement that council members should recuse themselves. This is a legislative action, not a quasi-judicial action. The appearance of fairness doctrine and the requirement of council members to redo—to recuse themselves when they are biased applies to quasi-judicial actions and not to legislative actions. The action before you is a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezon. A comprehensive plan amendment is clearly legislative in nature, and the both—the growth board has held that when a rezon is dependent upon a comprehensive plan designation, both are legislative and neither is quasi-judicial. So, you do not have to recuse yourselves based on that—that aspect of the law. Second, Mr. Rambrue raised the issue in his email today and also in his testimony this evening about whether or not there was adequate coordination with the city of Semamish. And I read Mr. Rambrue's email at least, and I think his statement tonight, as equating coordination with consultation—that there should have been consultation with the city of Semamish before this matter was put forward. There is a specific case that the growth board ruled on that addresses this issue specifically. And I believe Mr. Rambrue knows this case because both he and I—he and I were both representing clients in the case, Mr. Rambrue on one side, I on the other. The case is CAP versus City of Redmond. And in that case, the petitioners made the argument that consultation was required, that what coordination meant in the statute, specifically RCW 36.70A.100, which is the statute that Mr. Rambrue cited in his email, that what that required was that there be consultation. And in this—in that particular case, the argument of the petitioners was that the city of Redmond had not consulted with King County over a roadway and the amendment of the city's transportation master plan and the fact that the roadway was slated to go—to become a through street under the city's transportation plan. And the growth board said, and I quote, "The petitioner's contention that coordination equals consultation is not correct. The word consultation is used throughout the GMA, but nowhere is it used in the context suggested by the petitioners." So, in that case, what the growth board said was that there is no requirement that you consult with your adjacent jurisdictions. There is a requirement under the statute that your comprehensive plan be consistent with other jurisdictions. And what the board said in that case is that, like the consistency—with your internal consistency with your comprehensive plan, or your consistency with King County's comprehensive plan, or the CPP's—that it's consistent as long as there is no direct conflict and your comprehensive plan does not thwart Semamish's comprehensive plan and vice versa. So, that is an issue that you would have to consider if there was something raised here that said that your plan was inconsistent with Semamish's plan. But it doesn't require that you have to have had some sort of consultation or coordination in that respect with the city of Semamish. So, just wanted to make those two points. And I thank Mr. Rambrue for CCing me on his email this afternoon so that I had a chance to look at those—those issues before we came here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. And with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Administrator Snyder for her presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council, and good evening to community members who are here and those who may be watching from home. As the mayor introduced me, my name is Andrea Snyder. I'm the deputy city administrator. And I'll be giving—I'll attempt to give a brief presentation this evening, knowing that council has already had a couple of presentations on this issue. And with the option of phoning a friend, depending on what questions the council may have as we move through the presentation later on. So, the purpose of this evening is—we are requesting council action on whether to adopt ordinance 2895 regarding Providence Heights, specifically to amend the comp plan, to change the land use designation from low-density residential to community facilities, and also to rezon the three parcels from single-family, small lot to community facilities, facilities. By way of background, here's a map of those three properties. You see them highlighted here in yellow. They reference also the three parcels, 1, 2, and 3. We've had some comments this evening about parcel number 3, and it was the recommendation of the city's Planning and Policy Commission to keep—or to actually redesignate parcel number 3 as open space and to keep the current land use designations for parcels 1 and 2. The current designation and zoning for these parcels would allow for a middle school, elementary school, and also single-family homes. I wanted to highlight some previous action that's been taken to get us to this point where we are today. First is in October, the Planning Policy Commission, as I just stated, recommended to deny the redesignation request for the Providence Heights property and to redesignate parcel number 3 as community facilities, open space. In November, we had the first city council meeting on amendments and rezones. December 5, city council, you voted to deny the CIPA appeal and maintain the determination of nonsignificance. On December 16, city council approved other amendments and other rezones that were included in the docket for your consideration and delayed action on this particular property to provide an additional month for the Issaquah School District and Providence Point community to come to a settlement. As we have already discussed this evening, the—such a settlement did not occur. By way of reference, I wanted to include in the presentation materials the conceptual site plan or site design. This is the conceptual design. And this—this design we saw previously in Superintendent Thiele's comments and has been included in communications that council has received as well as the community and is available on Issaquah School District's website. This site concept references specific things we've heard from some of the community, including the stadium, which you'll see in the center of the site concept design, as well as buffers, which were something that—we've heard some comments from the community as well. So, for tonight, it's for council to consider and apply criteria defined in the Issaquah Municipal Code for comprehensive plan amendments and rezones. And we've heard a lot from the community about why the city should or should not support the amendments and zoning requests, and we thank the community for their engagement on this important issue. The Issaquah Municipal Code outlines the exact criteria for council's consideration tonight, and the comments heard over the past few months may inform city council in your interpretation of the code. The next few slides highlight the criteria for consideration tonight with more detail available—excuse me—available in the packet for this evening. And again, I'm just going to go over these briefly, knowing that more information is included in your packet. So, first, we have three comprehensive plan amendment criteria. Number one is to make sure that any amendment is consistent with the Issaquah comprehensive plan, is consistent with King County countywide planning policies in the GMA, and finally, that an amendment addresses changed conditions since the last time the relevant policy or map was considered. For rezon criteria, there are a number of these. There are 12, so I have a couple of slides as we go through what those are. Again, I'm just going to hit these very, very briefly and invite questions following—should council have questions? So, among the criteria is that the applicant provide a complete application, that the application considers health, safety, and welfare, that there are growth controls, meaning any additional density resulting from the rezon shall only be allowed if the Growth Management Act housing growth targets have not been met. Number four, that there are changed circumstances or reasonable development. This includes the need for additional property in the proposed zoning, or the proposed zoning is appropriate for reasonable development of the subject property. The zoning conformance—is general conformance with zoning standards under the proposed zoning district. That there's no detriment to adjacent property. The rezon will not be materially detrimental to uses or property in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. That the rezon is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That the rezon is also consistent with city regulations. That the rezon request complies with all other applicable rules. Also, public facilities and services, adequate public facilities and services are available or would be made available to serve the development allowed in the proposed zone. And that their environmental impacts are considered, that adverse environmental impacts can be mitigated, or that any probable unmitigated impacts are deemed to be accessible. So, those are the criteria. Should council approve of the comprehensive plan amendment and rezon requests as recommended, the next step for this project would be for the Issaquah School District to pursue a master site permit. And here is a diagram of the master site permit process, which would start with pre-application, application, a community conference, staff review, followed by a staff report, and the Development Commission recommendation to city council, and finally, city council's recommendation—or, I'm sorry, city council would be required to approve of the master site permit. So, as you can see along in this process, there are some touchpoints for community input to be taken into consideration for that master site plan, and certainly, council's approval would be required. Options for you tonight to consider. First, council, you may choose to adopt the ordinance. Of course, there's always the option to not adopt the ordinance. You could choose to amend the ordinance to concur with the Planning Policy Commission of preserving parcel 3 as open space and maintaining the designation of the other two parcels. Or four, you could provide other direction to staff as you deem fit tonight through your discussions. The recommendation from the administration is to adopt ordinance numbers 2895 regarding Providence Heights that would result in changing the land use designation from low-density residential to community facilities and rezon the three parcels from single-family, small lot to community facilities, facilities. And at this point, I'd like to remind council that on December 16, you made a motion to adopt ordinance 2895, and that motion was then postponed to tonight's meeting. So, the motion's already before you, and at this time, the motion—yes, is before you for deliberation and for a vote. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Andrea. Questions? Deputy—sorry, Council President Hunt?
Thank you. In our packet, there's information about the Central Issaquah Urban School Standard, and so I wondered what—if any—criteria from Central Issaquah are going to apply because this is not actually in Central Issaquah. And then I also wondered specifically what tree retention requirements are on the parcel in its current zoning and what would be in the proposed zoning.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Development Services Director Niven to help answer that question. This is my phone-a-friend portion of the evening.
Good evening, city council. Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. So, I'm going to start with the tree question. Your more broad question, I'm not sure I'm ready to answer this evening because we'd need to go through and look at the code for that. And I'm going to—I'm going to chart this out on the whiteboard because it's not a simple answer, and I think it would be easier if I can then point to some numbers. Okay. Now, I'll tell you what this means. So, right now, the property is owned, single-family, small lot, and what's being proposed is community facilities, facilities. The tree code that applies to single-family, small lot is IMC 1812. The tree code that applies to community facilities, facilities, compact schools is Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, Chapter 10. Okay? So, now you know why I wrote this out. The tree retention requirement under 1812 is—on single-family, small lot is 30%. The retention under CIDDS 10 is 25%. Under 1812, you could reduce that 30% by 50%, taking it down to 15%. Under Central Issaquah standards, you could reduce it down to zero. Okay? Under this code, there's no mitigation required. If you take it down, there's set of criteria in the code that identifies how you would allow that. Under Central Issaquah, if you reduce it down below the 25%, you have to replant to get it back to the 25%. So, you can look at it like this is an absolute, although some of the trees could be removed and replanted, whereas this could go down to 15 with no replanting.
And what was your second question?
And the second question was, what were the rest of the standards? Were they central or?
Specifically, the question is that in—there was the urban code. There's the compact code information provided in our packet. There was also some urban schools, and so I wondered how we are supposed to interpret that when this isn't Central Issaquah and what from that we should be taking into consideration for this property in particular.
Sure. So, right now, the city has had conversations with the school district about creating standards for a smaller footprint, which is the compact schools, which is where we're at today. We've started conversations with the school district about going to a more urban standard, and we have not developed those standards yet. So, that's kind of an ongoing conversation. I think our vision is the next round of schools would most likely be in Central Issaquah or in more dense locations where it would probably want to have a smaller footprint than what even the compact school standards would prescribe. We just haven't gotten there yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Deputy Council President Ray?
I just want to be kind of clear on—the rezon criteria. That's an and relationship. That is, it has to meet all 12 of the criteria to qualify as a rezon, not an or.
I believe so, yes.
Can you tell me what material detrimental means?
So, I am going to look to our city attorney to help provide an answer on that.
I did provide the council with a memo on this, which is in your packet, which basically said that materially detrimental meant that there had to be actual injury or harm that would occur as a result, that that injury or harm had to be substantial as opposed to minor, and that it had to be either mitigated— to minor, and that it had to be either mitigated, excuse me, not capable of mitigation or not mitigated if capable.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Being none. We have a motion on the table, which I can read, I'm assuming it's the one that I have in the packet. So the current motion that you have on the table is adopting ordinance number 2895, amending the land use designation map in the Isaguas Comprehensive Plan to change the designation of three parcels being acquired by the Isaguas School District on 228th Avenue Southeast from low-density residential to community facilities, and rezoning the three parcels from single-family-small lot to community facilities-facilities. You have the motion on the table, you've had a staff presentation and questions, this is open for deliberation. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I could go through, I wrote a lot of notes, a lot of heartfelt comments from a lot of people here this evening. I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to mention two reasons. So I moved this last time. I moved, I voted not to extend it a month, and I'm going to vote to support CFF again this evening. Just two things I want to talk about. One is the issue of, that was raised, that somehow it was unfair of the school district to offer a proposed settlement. I just don't get that. If I, if I go to a car dealership and I, and I want to buy a car, and I offer them and I say, okay, I will, I will pay you $34,999 for a car.
Excuse me, Councilmember Mertz? So deliberations is, I want you to be talking with the council member.
Sure, okay.
There you go.
Sure. So if I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. It's really intense. So if I offer somebody, if I go to a car dealership and I offer them 30, or somebody offers me $34,999 for a car, my answer's not going to be, how dare you? How dare you, sir, offer me a fixed amount of money for a fixed thing? My response might be, well, you know, it's actually worth this much, or, you know, I'll throw in the velour seats, or whatever. But it's, it is to me, whether one thought it was a good offer or a bad offer, it was, it was an attempt to address a specific question, which is what if this, what in this whole conversation is anyone sure of for anything? There were questions about what had the district said earlier, and, and so it was an attempt to put on paper a specific set of things, and you can disagree with those things, but it isn't, there is no harm in doing that. And so it is a measure of how inflamed conversations have gotten, that this is somehow viewed as an awful thing by the district, when in fact, it was a good thing by the district. And then the second thing that I will mention is that I am lucky enough to belong to a church that is right next to both Isaguas High and the middle school, and an elementary school, and Gibson Eck, and has been essentially just next to the high school for 58 years, my church having predated the high school by four years. We have a great relationship with the school district and with the high school, and have good communication with them, and when issues arise, we talk about it with the district, and they address it. And so it is, I understand how some members in our community would feel concerned about what it would do to the character of their neighborhood, but to me, it all comes back to, when the district was asked, how many of their schools are adjacent to residential properties, and they said, all of them. I'm here to tell you, my church benefits from being in the heart of the community, and, and being near the high school is not a bad thing at all for us. And I know that if the council chooses to go ahead with this, first of all, it's one step in, as the district pointed out, they got five or six months' worth of these sort of meetings ahead of them, if this, even if this goes ahead today, but it, things will get figured out, and so that's why I'm supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments for deliberations? Council President Hunt?
I had the opportunity to watch council deliberate on this as a member of the audience last time, and so I sat out in the audience, and I was listening to the reactions and listening very intently, and so the, the discussion around the need for listening and the need for talking with each other, I really, I really had that opportunity to focus on listening and to have that time to reflect, and some other members that spoke this evening did talk about the importance of that, and I appreciate that. I think it is really important that the two sides do continue to have an open dialogue. This, regardless of what happens this evening, there are other steps, this is a long process, and I think that open dialogue and that listening is, is so important, and I don't really understand, still, I don't really understand why there wasn't a meeting, and I would urge both sides to have a meeting, and it is different than, than email, I really believe that. I believe that talking to somebody face-to-face, you get a different, you get a different perspective, and it's very hard to understand somebody else's perspective without actually meeting. So I really urge both sides to do that, regardless of what happens. And one thing also that I wanted you all to know is that we received so many letters on this topic, and I have read all of the letters, and we've heard so many public comments. I, I believe that you do deserve.
Address the council.
I believe that, that we should be a government that is respectful and that listens to those comments, and that, and I do believe that the people of Providence Point deserve a government that hears them, and that is, is responsive, and that listens, and is actively listening and actively trying to understand those concerns. So I want to say, first of all, I thank them all for their letters. There's, one thing that's really struck me is that the letters are all different. People have taken the time to really write their own perspective, their own ideas on how this might work out. In many of these letters, there is hope that it can be worked out, and it's from many different perspectives about how it could work out. So I, I really appreciate the diversity of perspectives, and we are, we are hearing. And I think we also have this opportunity to acknowledge that it, change is disruptive, and change on this parcel will be disruptive. So we've also heard from parents of students and the students themselves, some of, you know, for the most part, the students can't vote, but we represent them too, and we represent their concerns, and so I'm also taking that into account in my decision this evening. And I personally am a parent of a child that's in the Isaguas School District. We all bring our unique perspectives making decisions, and that's part of who I am. It's not the thing that decides this for me, but it is, it is important, and we've heard about the overcrowding in schools, and we, as a city, are growing, and we need to find solutions that will involve growing our infrastructure with our growing population. So I, I believe it is possible for the school to work with the community to find some compromises. I don't think that the settlements, you know, from everything that we've heard, the settlement, that's, that wasn't the silver bullet. I think that there's potential, though, to continue working and to continue finding ways that the school can have a school there and meet the needs of the school, and can also try to work with the neighborhood to understand their concerns. I believe it is possible, and it will take continued dialogue. And the other thing I wanted to talk about is that I, I will be supportive of this rezone in part because I think that there are elements of this plan that actually could be mutually beneficial, and it will take collaboration, but there's shared facilities, the school does shared facilities with the community. When I went to a community meeting about the Tallas School Site, they talked about the potential for community members to be voice mentors, so for members of the community to actually volunteer and participate and help students. And I know that Providence Point is very engaged in volunteer work and very engaged in serving their community, and I, I think there's actually some potential here, and that's part of why I'm supporting the rezone. I think if you work together to share facilities and to understand their concerns, I think that there could be opportunities. And we will also be entering into a process, if this rezone goes forward, where we will be looking at a master site plan. I think that many of the issues that have raised, been raised, they can be addressed with design elements, so I'll be looking for that, and I'll also be looking at, because we don't yet have a permit in or anything like that, we don't yet have that master site plan, I want to give everyone a look ahead at some of my concerns for that master site plan, because I think that we, we worked with the school district on the, the compact schools design, and this site has some challenges in meeting those comprehensive plans, and so when we get the master site plan, we'll have to be really looking closely at how an actual design element is meeting these plans. So one issue is that in our, in our comprehensive plan, we say that compact schools shall be designed to allow bus and car access, yet prioritizing buses over cars, including bus-only drop-offs and pickups with pathways for bus riders, transit riders, cyclists, and walkers to the facility, which culminate in weather-protected entrances to create comfortable waiting areas, separate bicycle paths from sidewalks to ensure safe pedestrian access to schools. This is a big challenge for this site, to have safe pedestrian or non-single-vehicle access. So that's going to be a big design challenge. It's in our code, so we're going to have to look at what happens to make that happen. The other thing is, siting of compact schools shall reflect land scarcity by using smaller footprints on lots smaller than that recommended state minimum acreage guidelines. So even if it's, even if it's meeting specific setbacks, we wrote this code to try to get a smaller footprint for the site, so I, I want it to, I want the site plan to actually align with the intent of this, which is to make a more compact school that reflects that we have less land in the city. And I, I also think it will be very important to look at Land Use Policy G6, which there has been discussion around the stadium, and this relates directly to the stadium. Compact school design shall use the least amount of land for development and supporting infrastructure that is reasonable under the circumstances by building taller buildings using nearby public parks and recreational facilities when available, and minimizing the use of portable and modular units. So we worked with the school district on this, and I think that there's, right now, I really think there's a, an potential issue, because there's been discussion about parity of the schools and about having the same facilities at all the schools, and we actually worked with the school district to come up with this code that says, because we have, we're running out of land, we need to have more compact schools, we need to share facilities, so, so we need to reconcile that, and that will take working with the school district to understand how we can reconcile with that. And I can say that I'm personally committed, and I should be held accountable by everyone, to work to have a better and more open dialogue with the school district, so we can make sure that they know this is what's on the horizon, and this is what our code says, and this is why, and this is how we can grow as a city and have these facilities and still meet the intent of the code, and recognize that we're, we're a growing city and we have limited space. I have a few more things. One is that there, we need to take into account the natural areas on the site. We have a land use goal, strive to create connected wildlife corridors that link to protected areas adjacent to city limits, wildlife corridors, including the city's stream buffers, shoreline areas, natural open space, native growth protection areas, wetlands, steep slopes, forested hillsides, and other natural areas. This is a site that's in the Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin. It's, Laughing Jacobs Creek is one of the only habitat left for kokanee, which is a kind of salmon that's in very dire straits and very likely to go extinct without much, much work on the habitat and without a great deal of sort of heroic efforts to save it. So I think we need to, we need to make sure that we're respecting that this is in a area that's right near Lake Smamish and also in the Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin area. And to that end, I will also be looking at one comprehensive plan policy that directly relates to that, which is coordinate with regional jurisdictions and develop, implement flood plans, stormwater, water quality, and habitat management programs to achieve the goals of Cedar, Smamish, Lake Washington, Riva 8, Chinook Salmon Recovery Plan, Puget Sound Partnerships Sound Action Agenda, and Lake Smamish Kokanee Recovery. So we have in our comprehensive plan, we need to do what we can for kokanee recovery, so it needs, this site needs to take into account that it's in the sensitive area. So I'll be looking at that. Also on the, also on the stadium issue, I did note that a school, the land use for a high school is permissible in single-family estate and single-family SFS, which is a different single-family zone. So high school is allowed in these single-family zones, not single-family small lot, which is what it's on now, which is why we're having this discussion in the first place. However, I will note that I think there's a higher bar for the, for the stadium, and the stadium is not allowed in any of those single-family zones. So stadium is a different land use. I think it's, there's a reason why it's not allowed in the single-family estate and single-family SFS, as well as not allowed at SFSL, SFD, and so this stadium arena issue, I think we need to reconsider it, and I think that would also go a long way towards meeting the comp plan and sharing facilities, and it would also go a long way towards addressing a lot of the concerns of the community. So I would, I think that's better addressed in a site plan than in the rezone, but it's, it's something that I'll be thinking a lot about, and I want you to, I want everybody to know that. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is that I would really like to see this open dialogue, this understanding that I, I think there is room for compromise, and I think there is room on both sides to make that happen, and I would like to continue to see both sides work together, and I'd like to be a part of that, working together. And I'd also like to see more thinking outside of the box. So one idea, just to put it out there as an idea, is I think it would be really amazing in this forested area if they, if there were to be something more like a living laboratory, where you could have an outdoor area that was natural, and children that are growing up right now, we've, we've had children, high school students, come and talk about the need to, to do more for climate change. I think that this next generation is really motivated to be more environmentally conscious and to find solutions and to learn about how we can better protect the environment. And so I think something that, something like that, where you could address some of the concerns of the neighborhood with more forested mature trees and more buffer, and then also incorporate into, into the plan, and also incorporate into how you're physically active and the mental benefits of the open space, I think that would be really wonderful. So I'm just throwing that out there as an idea. I think there's so many good ideas out there. I think Providence Point has good ideas, and they've come forward with many of them, and I know that they're going to continue the dialogue, and I really appreciate that. And I do think we can work together to respect both our seniors and reflect that we are a community that does respect our seniors, as well as respects that we also very much value education of our children.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Anyone else to speak at deliberations? And also, I just want to let you know, Toby Frey, let the deputy president jump in here, this is an opportunity for you also to ask each other questions about why a point is so compelling and convincing to one. So, so you have opportunity here to dialogue, and you have opportunity also to explain your rationale behind your decision-making. Deputy Council President Ray?
I really hate coming after Council President.
That's what I thought.
I think it's really unfortunate that we're having this difficult discussion. We have a situation that puts our community at odds with itself. We have one, we are looking at an outcome that's going to put one group of stakeholders at odds with another. I believe that is, I do believe that a solution can be found. I think there are plenty of good outcomes. I was hopeful that we would reach that agreement prior to this meeting. That was the intent when we ended up 2019, and I think that our, our community wants us to find a way to reach a solution that works for everybody. That being said, we clearly need to address the pressing need for more classrooms that are clearly and desperately needed in the school district. I think there's no argument anywhere that that's something we need to do. Everyone up here clearly cares deeply about our children, and we value the Isaguas School District as a vital part of our community. I think the point that part of the value of this community is absolutely tied to the quality of the school district. But ultimately, since we've not reached an agreement, I really fear that we will encounter further delays in moving the school forward, not fewer delays. further delays in moving the school forward, not fewer delays. I believe we need to continue to work diligently regardless of what the outcome of this decision is, to come together and find a path forward that helps build community and not divide community. Because the, I truly believe if we cannot come together as the school district and the Providence Point community to find a solution forward, the outcome is going to be not good for the school district, not good for the Providence Point, and probably most importantly, not good for the children who clearly need some relief, and the stories have been pretty compelling.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Council members? Councilmember DeMichele, Councilmember Walsh.
All right. Well, I always do better when I write down my thoughts, and I spent today doing a lot of that, so I will try to look at you while I'm looking at my notes here. But I'm going to just echo what other council members have said. We heard from people who said that they moved here to have a quiet and serene retirement, and we've heard from others who've said they moved here because they love the quality of the schools, they wanted a great education for their kids. We've heard from people who are afraid they're going to lose their property values and the quality of their life. And we've heard from other people who are afraid that their children are just not going to get the full education that they should. And what I've felt while I've reading through hundreds, literally hundreds of emails, is a sense of people talking past each other instead of to each other. And it makes me sad. It was a sad experience to read through these. Councilmember Hunt said that she would like to look outside the box on this, and I would too. And one of the thoughts I had, I really would, I really wish that the people that were sending emails here and emails here could talk to each other. And I know that it's not the city's responsibility, it's not the school district's responsibility, it's not Providence Point's umbrella association's responsibility, but I wonder if we could approach a neutral in the future, if we have these kinds of divisive conversations, if we could approach an outside neutral organization like the League of Women Voters or some other group to just bring us together and, as people, share, not as organizations, but as people, share our perspectives. Why did we, why did we come to Isqwa? Why do we love this community so much? And what do we hope for its future? So that, I just concur with my other council members in that, that hope, that we can have better dialogue between everyone. When I was thinking about who would have to live with this decision, you know, who's actually going to live with this decision? I thought of four different groups. First, the people at Providence Point, because obviously, this decision is going to impact them. I thought about the students who are already here and already in overcrowded schools. And when you have students, you have parents and teachers and school administrators who are also impacted. And then we also have to think, I think, about the taxpayers who support the Isqwa School District. So those were the people. I tried to see through their points of view and their lived experience to think through this. And I too was very, very hopeful that there would be a coming together before we had to make this decision. I was very hopeful that that would happen, but it didn't happen, and so now, tonight, we need to choose. And if people who know my background will know that I believe that schools are a foundational element of a thriving community. Without good schools, without schools that are doing their job, we have a hollow, hollow community. We have to support them. So I just did a little math. My math's not great, so let's hope it works. But right now, we know that there are approximately 4,600 students in a skyline in Isqwa High and in two schools that were built for 3,600 students. We know that by 2022, and I'm using the school district's projections, that there will be 5,000 students in those schools. And that's before this new school is opened, even if it's on time. And if we go beyond 2022, we're going to have up to 5,000 students in that, in those two schools that were built for 3,600. So I feel that in the, for the greater good of the Isqwa community, that we have to go forward and approve this rezone, and I will be supporting this rezone.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Walsh?
So I will admit, I did not come into tonight having made up my mind on this. This is a frustrating situation for us as a council and a community to be in. Yeah. I'm really disappointed with where we have ended up after providing a delay, and I will just say that out there. I'm sorry, I'm very frustrated by this situation, as many people, my husband included, have heard from me over the last few days. I am disappointed in how the school district has responded and not responded to the community after we gave them an opportunity to work together and come together. And this, I think, leaves us as a council in a difficult situation. I don't think what we asked for was something that was hard to do. I think it is the minimum that is required to respect the members of the community who will be impacted by this. And so I am very frustrated with the lack of meeting and with sending a settlement agreement without an associated meeting. And the message that that communicates to the community. Like, who wants to be sent a legal agreement to say, here, sign away your rights because we feel like we've hurt you? That's not the way that you treat neighbors. And I fear for where this leaves the community in the next round of conversations. Because when we are looking at this, being told to trust the school district to do what they say that they will do, when the past month has demonstrated that despite proclamations that they're interested in being good neighbors and interested in talking to the community around, that they are, they're not able to somehow, something's happening internally there, where they're not able to get that happening. It leaves me in a really difficult situation to look toward this master site plan and to look forward on this. And I've got kids that will potentially go to whatever school this is. I'm frustrated. So I appreciate that Council President Hunt discussed the areas that might need mitigation and the intent of the compact school policies, and all of these things that we will need to discuss through the master site plan. Because I think that is the next step that is essential for getting to a good point. I think, as much as I am frustrated with the way that the school district has responded in these cases, I think our responsibility as council when looking at our comprehensive plan and an amendment is to recognize the need of new schools and that no area is protected from future development, and that ultimately, CFF as a designation is appropriate for these three parcels. But that doesn't mean that our responsibility stops there. And I'm like 60% committed to that opinion. And if anybody has anything going in another direction, I am willing to hear it because I could have been at 100% supporting the CFF designation, depending on how the school district had responded in this last month. And I'm not there. So that's what I believe, and I'm really frustrated.
Noted.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Walsh, we have two more council members to speak, and then we will see if any council members want to interact with anybody else on their rationale for voting. So I believe we have Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I'm frustrated as well, largely for the reasons that Councilmember Walsh mentioned. It doesn't, it doesn't really bear so much on my, the way I'll vote tonight, except to say I was disappointed that, in the way that the communication happened to, between the school district and Providence Point. I think it doesn't feel like a good faith effort to be a good neighbor, but I'm not in the meetings with the school boards and in their executive sessions, obviously, so I don't know what the conversations are like. I do appreciate very much the comments that we heard from a few folks tonight, one in particular about how, seriously is not, seriously is not the right word, but I think, to heart, maybe is how I felt. Her comments tonight were, to heart, how she felt, what we did on the 16th to provide in five weeks for the people to come together and to see if they can find a compromise. I appreciated how seriously she took that charge, and so I very much appreciate those comments. The, yeah, this is, I was telling somebody before the meeting, very, very difficult decision. Usually, decisions that we make up here, they sometimes they're difficult, but it's usually always a joy to serve the community. And this is not one of those times because it feels like a win-lose situation, and I don't, I don't think that's fair to the community. Parents, students, faculty, it's difficult. There must be some reason that a high school is not as use, that a high school is not a use that is allowed currently in the SFSL zone. Stadia and arenas are also not allowed in the SFSL zone. I don't think it's a stretch to assume that high schools probably are not allowed in that zone, that it's currently zoned, because at least in our suburban area, high schools tend to be built with sprawling sports amenities, including stadiums. If not for the stadium, I think the other impacts could probably be mitigated. Without a stadium, the issue with lights and noise goes away. The footprint for the high school would be smaller, more trees could be retained, the environmental issues would be lessened. I'm not sure about traffic, though, because the high schools around here seem to have a ton of student drivers. Regardless, the stadium is a significant issue. If this were a proposed, a proposed rezone so that the city or county or even a private entity could build a stadium, I would say no. A stadium accompanying a high school is still a stadium, and a high school without a stadium is still a high school. If the parcels are zoned to CFF, then not only could a high school be built there, but there are other uses that would be allowed if, for some reason, the high school were not built. Those allowed uses include a stadium, an arena, a standalone, a heliport or a helipad, a jail, and a shooting range, and none of which are allowed in the current SFSL zone. So although a high school would likely be built there if we rezoned it, there are no guarantees. There are a long list of other uses that, worst-case scenario, could be built if the land did in fact change hands. Again, I don't think that's likely, but it could happen. I've also heard that the proposed new schools may have fewer classrooms than originally planned due to increased construction costs. I believe that the schools should be designed for prioritizing space for future classrooms over stadium use. There was a comment tonight about stadiums and the ability to use them for educational purposes, and of course, I agree with that. But I'm not, I'm guessing, I'm not sure all the stadiums in the state and in the denser areas like Seattle, I'm not sure all those high schools have stadiums, but I'm guessing that they still somehow get their PE credits. I'm saying, I don't know, just because I question that comment about whether a stadium is actually required. I think it's highly desired for the parity reasons, but I don't hear a huge demand for a stadium. I'm not really comfortable relying on the master site plan process to vet and mitigate all of the issues. The council will be limited in what it can require or condition as part of that process. The council probably could not, for example, require tree retention beyond what the code requires, and I'm not confident that we will be able to mitigate traffic impacts meaningfully. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of the rezone. If the high school plans did not include a stadium, then I might feel differently. Specifically, I don't believe that it meets the no material detriment element, and I also don't believe that can meet the environmental impacts element of the requirements for a rezone. If the rezone is approved tonight, then at the next stage of the process, which is the master site plan approval process, I will be looking to ensure that the impacts, including light, noise, trees, environmental issues, and traffic are mitigated to the fullest extent possible. And I do echo my fellow council members' comments about really hoping that folks come together, because I do believe that there's a possibility that if the vote is approved tonight, that things could still, that could still result in a significant delay based on the available legal processes.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Hall?
I get the sentence a little bit of an echo chamber here tonight. I'm also frustrated, and as this is one of my first votes as a member of the Isqwa City Council, it's an important and personal one to me, especially as someone who grew up here in Isqwa and actually attended and graduated from Isqwa schools. I feel torn here, and I certainly empathize with both communities who feel pressure in different ways. And at the risk of mixing metaphors with my colleagues, it's as if we're talking to each other through a closed door. And I hope we're able to open that door and listen on both sides, and I think that also includes us recognizing where we are speaking through a closed door as well, and how we can help facilitate opening that. And I also want to agree with the council president here. I think in-person communication, genuine, open-mindedness is the root of community, or at least the root of Isqwa and good community. Couple of things I wanted to touch on, kind of where my headspace is on this issue. The first, I wanted to briefly talk about the settlement agreement, the proposed settlement agreement. And I understand, and we certainly got a lot of emails, saying that members of the Providence Point community felt that signing an agreement like that would be signing away their rights to, signing away their legal rights. I actually, when I read it, I saw it in a little bit of a different way. I kind of saw it as a huge bargaining chip for the Providence Point community to be able to hold something up and say, hey, you didn't follow what you said. And so I kind of interpreted that just a little bit differently for that community. I think the issue of talking about the sports stadium and the field is not over. And I would hope to have more conversations with the community and with the school district about that frank conversations, about whether or not that's necessary, and also being mindful from my own place, having graduated from Isqwa High School, my educational, my education at Isqwa High School would have been dramatically different without a sports stadium there. I fervently believe that. sports stadium there. I fervently believe that. So, a discussion more broadly here, I think, is going to take a little bit longer about, we keep talking about parity, I think we should call it out as an issue of equity and education delivery to our students. And we need to have that conversation in the space of how are we respecting our community as well. I haven't really seen that happen yet. I've seen it more as one or the other, and I don't believe that, maybe this is just because I'm a new member of city council, but I don't believe in win-lose situations. I think we can find a win-win or semi-win, semi-win, and that's what I want to find here. This is where my headspace is at, you guys. I think the first time I heard the argument about reduced class sizes, I thought that was a really decent one. And I think that it's important that we are also mindful of that moving forward, but also, going back to my previous comments, recognizing that field space is certainly education delivery space. And whether or not another school district in a different part of the state doesn't do that, I think recognizing, I think it's also important to recognize that we do live in a special area, and we live in the middle of a very special school district. So, how do we bring that to bear in this conversation is what I'd like to see moving forward as well. I will be, I'll be voting in favor of rezoning Parcels 1, 2, and 3, Community Facilities, facilities, tonight. It's important to me that we're thinking about this methodically, and I think that our vote should be compatible with the intent of our comprehensive plan and the intent of the Growth Management Act, and I think that tells us to be voting in favor tonight. And I see this decision as just the first step of many. That being said, the next step in this process, talking about steps, you know, gives us an opportunity to go much deeper and have a much more substantive role, at least this is my take on where we're at as a city council. And I want to make sure you all know that I have many, many, many concerns moving forward. So, I wrote down a list here, and I'm going to reference that. Some of my concerns include the size of the buffer, which we heard a little bit about tonight, the preservation of mature trees, and the health of our greater watershed that the council president was alluding to, the lack of an additional entrance on and off the property, the potential impacts to traffic, the potential impacts to emergency service delivery as well. And we brought this up a little bit earlier, too, but I think there's also an opportunity here to use the urban school and compact school policies that we put together in partnership, at least my understanding is that we put them together in partnership with the Issaquah School District, that we can use that as a comparative tool to judge how our projects are best serving the community at large, and also the intent of our comprehensive plan, the intent of our other priorities here and in the community, including environmental priorities and climate. So, I just really believe that the door isn't closed on discussions here. It's not locked. What I was saying before, it does feel like we're talking through a door, but it's not locked. I really think that we can open it, and I think we can dialogue more on these issues, and I don't think that our voting in favor tonight closes the door on any of that. So, for that reason, I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. So, at this point in time, deliberations, everyone has had a chance to address their fellow council members. Does anybody wish to ask any questions or continue deliberations? Council President Hunt?
I have a question regarding the community facilities designation. So, I had, and I think it's a question for staff. I had found in community facilities that in our code, 18.06.090, it talks about primary purpose of this district is to provide for public benefit uses on publicly owned property, and to further specify which uses are appropriate for specific properties, and then it goes on with the three different kinds. And it also says, "Community facilities district will separate public land, city, county, school district, special district, state, and federal that is being utilized or planned for public benefit uses into separate zoning categories." And so, I took that to mean that this is a zone that's for public benefit uses. Is that, am I right? And so, my question is, because Councilmember Goodman mentions, which would be concerning if this were to be used for a private helipad or, you know, something, something else, because that was, honestly, my interpretation was that this is for public benefit, and that is in their code.
Yes, I believe that's correct. It is for public benefit.
It has to be owned by public.
And it has to be owned by a public property owner.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, we're going to move towards the vote, and I'll read the motion again. The motion is to adopt ordinance number 2895, amending the land use designation map in the Issaquah Comprehensive Plan to change the designation of three parcels being acquired by the Issaquah School District on 228th Avenue Southeast from low-density residential to community facilities, and rezoning the three parcels from single-family small lot to community facilities-dash-facilities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I have you show your hands, please? Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passed, sorry, the ordinance is adopted, 5 to 2, with Goodman and Ray in opposition. That concludes this evening's vote on it, but Andrea, I wonder if it would be helpful to the public if you could give a little rundown on what the next process is going to look like. We've heard a little bit about it today, but one thing I didn't hear that came up is that I believe, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, the council's next touch on this will be a quasi-judicial touch. They will not be able to engage with the public prior to voting on the master site plan.
Once a master site plan application has been filed, the master site plan process becomes quasi-judicial for the council, and you would not be able to engage with the public at that point, from that point until the decision is made. But that is, there is no master site plan application filed as of this time, is my understanding.
And I just wanted to clarify that, because I do appreciate the comments of the council members this evening who made clear some of those areas or components of master site plan that were important to them, and then your need to verify to yourselves that they meet the code that is laid out. The next item on the agenda this evening is Good of the Order. Do council members have anything for Good of the Order?
I do. I have upcoming means. Oh, Councilmember Walsh?
I just wanted to second on your mayor's report that our Public Works team just needs a really great pat on the back, a hot chocolate, something to...
They got pizza.
They got pizza? Okay. Well, I wanted to express my gratitude that the city just ran phenomenally during the snowstorm, and I very much appreciate, as a citizen, the ability to know that everything was taken care of.
Thank you, and we'll make sure the deputy passes that on to the PWO team. Anything else? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I'll just quickly piggyback off that. All the stories that I heard of our community members, community members here in Issaquah shoveling people's driveways and getting out and helping Public Works wherever they can, I just want to make sure that they feel recognized, and thank you very much for helping out the community. We have such a great community here in Issaquah.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Anything else for Good of the Order? I'll go to the upcoming council meetings. On January 28, there is a council study session at 6:30. Potential agenda items are cascade water supply options, cemetery management agreement, 2021, 2022 human services grant funding approach and target, transit-oriented development update, and City Hall Northwest Office Discussion. Quite a mix. February 1, the city council is having a special meeting/retreat from 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's a Saturday. The meeting location has been changed to Tibbetts Creek Manor, and the agenda items are being developed. And on February 3, my husband's birthday, there is a regular city council meeting at 7:00 p.m., and the potential agenda items are the Washington State Creative District designation, there'll be an informational update, utilizing portion of the RV park for the transit-oriented development relocation site. There is no executive session this evening, so council is adjourned at 9:40.